Y'all ready? All right. Good evening. Welcome to our regular meeting of the Temple ISD Board of Trustees for April 8th, 2019. Our first act is to declare a quorum, which we do have. Our second item is the Pledge of Allegiance. Would everybody please stand?
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
I pledge allegiance to Texas. I pledge allegiance to the Texas, one state, under God, one indivisible.
Item number three is our public forum. No one signed up tonight? Okay. Item four is superintendent recognitions. And would all the members please come down to the front?
Good evening. We have several recognitions this evening to make, and we're going to start with Math Counts Competition State Qualifiers. Math Counts is a national math competition program that's designed to develop and strengthen math, science, leadership, and teamwork skills. In February, students representing each of our middle school campuses competed in the Central Texas Chapter Math Counts Competition at Baylor University. We had six students that will advance to the state competition. Or actually, y'all did on March 30th, didn't you? Six students who did advance to the state competition. And we want to make sure that we acknowledge our state qualifiers. So when I call your name, if you'll come forward and get your certificate, and then shake our board members' hands. First, I have David Petorka. And Jaden Hayward. Jeremy Carrera. Joseph Hernandez. Jesa Vehu. And Ella Hindy. If y'all, yeah, hang on one second. We'll get a group picture. Yeah. Yeah, if y'all all come back for just a second, we'll get a group picture of everybody. Bring your certificate. Yeah. Yeah. Perfect. Great job, guys. Next, we would like to recognize Jalen Kindles for her state powerlifting meet performance at the, Jalen, I'm sorry, Jalen is a senior at Temple High School, and she placed third in the state at the Texas High School Women's Powerlifting Meet in March. And I'm not exactly sure what it means, but you pulled 415 pounds. So really and truly, an extraordinary accomplishment. Oh, one with her? Mm-hmm. Yeah. Yeah. Great job. And our next recognition is actually a national recognition, and it is for Kennedy Powell Elementary for being named a 2018 Project Lead the Way Distinguished Campus. Kennedy Powell has been recognized for this accomplishment because they have provided such broad access to transformative learning opportunities for students through Project Lead the Way. This honor really recognizes schools that go above and beyond with implementing the Project Lead the Way program, and this is the second year in a row for Kennedy Powell to earn this recognition. Kennedy Powell is just one of 214 schools across the country to receive this honor. And truly, congratulations to Dr. Madden and her staff. You have a banner for your, y'all came prepared! Wow! Yeah, that does not surprise me. It does not surprise me at all. Yeah, why don't, yeah. There you go. Perfect. And I do apologize because I did forget to recognize a couple of people. Jalen did not get to that position on her own. She actually has a couple of her coaches that are here today, so please stand and wave powerlifting coaches who have participated in this for her. Thank you, Coach Knox. So this next award is a state recognition, kind of. It is one that has been given to Monica Steinman Berry, who was selected as the ABM Employee of the Year for 2019. Monica works for, and contracts with ABM, who provides custodial services for our district. So ABM has contracts across the state, and I believe regionally across the southwestern region. And so this is a huge award for Monica, who deserves this award and earned it for really being a team player. She is always willing to go above and beyond and do anything asked of her. She is a custodian at the high school. She excels in communication with staff about matters that need attention, and she manages 15 employees as well up at the high school. And really and truly, she has this I-care attitude, and she takes pride in her work and always challenges those around her to excel as well. And so Monica, we are so very proud of you, and please accept this on our behalf, and thank you for all that you do. And her supervisor, Jonathan Rysnick, is here too, so we'd like to recognize you. Yes. You're probably next.
Her husband's Zach, my two grandchildren, Remy and Chloe.
Again, we don't thank everybody for coming tonight. You're more than welcome to stay, but at this point, if you've been here for the recognition, you're free to leave if you'd like to. Yeah.
Yeah, we're gonna have to, we're gonna have to start doing some incentives.
Yeah. We'll go ahead. Item five is executive hires. Mr. Palmer. Ms. Adams, okay?
Thank you. Board of Directors, Mr. Posey, Dr. Ott. The departmental interview committee consisting of Mark Civic, Jackie Wright, Connie Cisneros, Connie Cisneros, Franz, Matana, Billy Madden, Renata Rogers, and Dr. Beth Genowitz, and Lisa Adams, selected from a field of applicants, six candidates to interview for the position of Director of Digital Learning. The committee is recommending consideration of Craig Wilson as the Director of Digital Learning. Mr. Wilson received his Bachelor of Arts from the University of Texas in 1990. He later went on to obtain a Master of Education in School Administration in 1995 at the University of Houston. Craig began his career as an elementary teacher, but quickly moved into the role of an instructional technology specialist in Fort Bend ISD. He then worked in the private sector as an IT manager, but returned to education in 2002 where he worked as an elementary principal and a curriculum coordinator in Albion Public Schools in Michigan. Craig has spent the last eight years in Temple ISD, serving as the proud principal of the Thornton Elementary T-Birds. And Mr. Wilson is married to his wife Susan, and they are the proud parents of Hannah, a Temple High School graduate. So at this time, we'd like to bring forth the recommendation that Mr. Wilson be accepted as the Director of Digital Learning.
Any questions? Is there a motion?
Move for approval.
Motion by Mr. Gaines.
Second.
Oh, second.
Seconded by Ms. Suarez. Have a lot of takers for this. All in favor, signify by saying aye. The motion passes. Congratulations.
Thank you. Mr. Wilson, you want to come say a word?
You can tell your level of support here by the number of people trying to second the motion.
Yeah, I do. Thank you. Oh, gosh, I am, I am so nervous, but anyway. So Board of Trustees, Ms. Adams, Dr. Ott, and my Thornton family that's here, I want to thank you for this opportunity to serve the community of Temple ISD in this new and exciting role. So I'd like to introduce my wife Susan. She's, she's back there. She really is back there. This is a little bit of a family affair. I don't know if you guys know, Susan does work over at Edwards Academy. And like Ms. Adams said, my daughter Hannah graduated top in her class over at Temple High and is a second-year engineering student over at the University of Texas in Austin. So she couldn't be with us today. She said, "Dad, I got so many exams." So she can't be with us. But I'm excited that I'm able to impact TISD in this directorship role. Instructional technology has always been a passion of mine, it's in my blood. This position, I think, will allow me to support the initiative, especially with blended learning and then whatever future endeavors we have as well. So it's time for me to roll up those sleeves, dust off my old technology skills, and get to work. So I will definitely miss my Thornton family after eight years together, but they're in great hands. They'll do fine. So again, thank you for having the confidence in me to begin this new journey with Temple ISD. Thank you, guys.
Item six is the Board President's Report, 6A, Announcement of School Board Training Credits. This is from April 1st, 2018 to April 4th, 2019. As Board President, I am required to announce the name of each member who has that, of that member's anniversary of election or appointment to the Board, has completed the required continuing education, has exceeded the required continuing education, and is deficient in meeting the required continuing education. There are four tiers of Board members continuing education. Tier one, local district orientation, basic legal orientation, and legal update training. Tier two, team building training with all Board members and the superintendent. Tier three, annual continuing education. And tier four, evaluating student academic performance. Tier one, local district orientation training. Dr. Sandhya Sanhi, a first-year Board member, has completed the tier one local district orientation, basic legal orientation, and legal update training. Tier two, team building. The following Board members have completed the required team building training. Lynell Davis, Ronnie Gaines, Shannon Gallin, Shannon Myers, Dan Posey, Sandhya Sanhi, Virginia Suarez, and Dr. Bobby Ott, superintendent, on August 3rd, 2018. Tier three, continuing education. The following Board members have completed the required continuing education requirements. Lynell Davis, Ronnie Gaines, Shannon Gallin, Shannon Myers, Dan Posey, Sandhya Sanhi, and Virginia Suarez. Tier four, evaluating student academic performance training. The following Board members have completed the required continuing education requirements. Lynell Davis, Ronnie Gaines, Shannon Gallin, Shannon Myers, Dan Posey, Sandhya Sanhi, and Virginia Suarez. Exceeding required continuing education, first-year members, 10 hours required, experienced five hours. One, Board members, Lynell Davis exceeded the required amount of required continuing education training by 12.5 additional hours. Board member Ronnie Gaines exceeded the required amount of required continuing education training by 19.25 additional hours. Board member Shannon Gallin exceeded the required amount of required continuing education training by .25 additional hours. Board member Shannon Myers exceeded the required amount of required continuing training, education training, by 18 additional hours. Board member Dan Posey exceeded the required amount of required continuing education training by 9.75 additional hours. Board member Sandhya Sanhi exceeded the required amount of required continuing education training by .25 additional hours. And Board member Virginia Suarez exceeded the required amount of required continuing education training by 2.25 additional hours. Okay. Item B is future items discussion. Dr. Ott? What do you want me to?
Future items? That's...
That's, oh, I'm sorry. Future items? Any future items that the members wish to discuss and have put on the agenda? Okay. Seeing none. Guess important dates? Yeah.
Okay. Board members, if I can draw your attention to the important dates in your packet. This week is star testing. Fourth and seventh grade writing, fifth and eighth grade reading and math, and English I and English II are all tested this week across the state. We also have the Temple ISD Job Fair this Saturday, April 13th, at the Temple High School Library from 10:00 to noon. One thing that's not on your dates that I do want to bring to your attention is our one-act play actually advanced to the area round, and their competition will be this Saturday at Waco University, starting around 4:00 p.m. We also have the Temple Education Foundation Full Board Meeting next Monday at noon here in the Admin Building. And a couple other dates. April 17th, which is a Wednesday, we have the Central Texas Incredible Kids Celebration. That's at the Bell County Expo Center from 11:30 to 1:00. Some of you already have tickets. Those of you that are still interested in attending, please contact Marilyn, and we'll make sure to secure a ticket for you. That same evening, we have another Temple High School College Info Night. That's at the library from 5:30 to 6:30. And that Friday, we have a Staff and Student Holiday. And another item that's not on your important dates, April 23rd, we will have pre-K registration at Meredith Dunbar. The 24th, we have our School Board Policy Committee meeting, and the 25th, our Facilities Committee meeting. The 26th, we have ROTC Awards Night, Temple High School Main Cafeteria at 6:00 p.m. That's on a Friday. And then you have a list of important dates on the backside. Those are all fine arts performances between April 6th and May 31st. Those include your end-of-year art shows, your spring performances, music programs, et cetera, to get us through the rest of the school year.
All right. Any questions? All right. Item seven is consent items. Consideration for approval of the following group of items, 7A through G1. Is there a recommendation from the Board? What they'd like to do with these items?
I move to approve all items as one.
Motion made by Ms. Gallin?
Second.
Seconded by Mr. Gaines. All in favor, signify by saying aye.
Aye.
The motion passes. Thank you. Item eight is action items, Human Resources. Mr. Palmer.
Thank you, Mr. Posey, Dr. Ott, members of the Board. Two or three things tonight. One is 2018-19 Superintendent's Personnel Recommendation. If you'll look at that, there are three hires, two are nurses, to fill the rest of the year, and the third is a coach that's currently college coach and able to get away a little sooner to fill one of the open spots that we have currently. So I'd recommend those three to the Board at this time.
Any discussion? Does this require a motion?
Move for approval.
Motion by Mr. Gaines. Seconded by Mrs. Davis. All in favor, signify by saying aye.
Aye.
The ayes have it.
One quick clarification on that, just in case there's a question. Coach Cameron has not resigned. It shows that Coach has, Case has taken his place, but actually, Coach Cameron was moved up and took Coach Knox's spot. And Coach Knox didn't resign either. He took Coach, he took Coach Martin's place, but Coach Martin did resign, so...
That clarification. Thank you.
It's kind of like a who's on first.
Yeah.
We have two pages. One is the original page for the 1920 Superintendent's Personnel Recommendation, and the second is an addendum to that. So if you'd like to look over those, have any questions, I'm certainly open to any.
Okay.
Some very, very new teachers, obviously, as you can see, particularly at Bonham. So Ms. Atmar will have her work cut out for her with some teachers straight out of college, but two great places to hire from as far as University of Maryhorn and Baylor. And of course, we've got one from Missouri and then another from Nebraska.
Okay. Thank you. Any questions, Mr. Palmer? Does require a motion? Motion by Ms. Gallin.
Second.
Seconded by Dr. Sanhi. All in favor, signify by saying aye.
Aye.
The motion has it. All right.
The only explanation on that I might just call your attention to is Jamie Ferguson, who actually is here, but she's been moved or promoted to the special ed director at the high school. So that, that'll take effect next fall. And then the third and final item, our, okay, our administrative contract recommendations. As you look at those, they're both one-year, all of our principals, with exception of those that we're looking for at this point in time. Those are all listed at the top on two-year contracts. And then at the bottom, there's a variation of both one-year and two-year contracts. Most, the two-year contracts are those that are executive directors or chiefs.
Any questions? Again, this one also requires a motion.
Move for approval.
Motion by Mr. Gaines.
Second.
Seconded, oh. Seconded by Mrs. Davis. All in favor, by signify by saying aye.
Aye.
The ayes have it. Thank you.
And one last thing on that, just to keep you up to date. Meredith Dunbar, Western Hills, and Thornton are looking for principals at this time. The campus committees have been elected by the campus staff, and each one of the campuses are currently reviewing applicants on the website. So those will be coming. Hopefully, all those will be available by the May Board Meeting.
Okay. Thank you, Mr. Palmer.
Thank you, sir.
Next item is curriculum instruction, which I don't believe you have any items tonight. Next one is finance facilities, which I don't believe you have any items either for that one. Next one's student services, and not any items for that one either. Next one is Board Committee Reports, Facility Committee Meeting Update. Mr. Gaines?
Thank you, Mr. Posey. Facility Committee met on, Executive Summary on Thursday, March 28th, 2019. The committee surveyed the following properties. Potential sale of property adjacent to Kennedy Powell. The committee discussed the possible selling approximately 1.88 acres of land from the Kennedy Powell campus. Along with an offer to purchase, the potential buyer has agreed to grant both a drainage easement and assessment easement to the district. In addition, he has also pledged to construct higher-end homes which would enhance the properties, the values there in the area. This will also be presented at the next, for consideration in that, in future board meeting. Pending property purchase, the administration reported that contracts have been signed and the purchase of property on Old Highway 95, property adjacent to Scott Elementary, and the property across from the maintenance facility should be closing. All those properties will be closing soon. And project updates, Stan Tech reported that they have begun a process of master planning development for the auxiliary service facility downtown that is our maintenance facility. It will be meeting soon with such support staff to solidify input on the further planning and development. The committee were given construction updates for AutoTech, Fine Arts, SPED, improvements at Temple High School, as well as projects at Scott, Western Hills, Travis, and Lamar. Our next committee meeting will be held April 25th at 4:00 p.m. here at the CAO.
All right. Thank you, Mr. Gaines. Sure. Go ahead, Dr. Ott.
Just wanted to add a few comments to Mr. Gaines' report. The drainage easement is particularly important over by Kennedy Powell. In the event that we ever do expand that campus, we will already have that easement in place, and we will not repeat the situation that took place at Ray Allen where we never got an easement, and we got boxed in. And then the second piece, for the auxiliary services facilities audit, the TRZ has a project planning meeting this Wednesday, I believe at 7:00 a.m., and I will be attending that and have the facilities audit in hand. So hopefully, we'll be able to share some of that information with the Reinvestment Zone for potential support later on that project.
All right. Thank you. Next item is the Policy Committee Update. Mrs. Davis.
Thank you, Mrs. Posey. The meeting was called to order at 4:00, 2:00 p.m. on March 27th. A brief update on the recent legislative developments was given. The school funding bill is moving through the process. Teacher pay is still being discussed. House Bill 3 currently contains language regarding TREs and requirements for an efficiency review. The legislators' bills and their impact on the district will be presented at the upcoming Board Retreat. Various policies regarding the naming of facilities were presented. Some school districts do not have a policy, and some have very detailed ones. Potential language was discussed, and a draft policy for Temple ISD will be presented at the next committee meeting. The Friends of TISD and the Transfer Policy and Procedures items were tabled until a future meeting. Vantage points documents, along with a summary of changes for the TASB Policy Update 112, were reviewed and discussed. The committee agreed to move forward and bring Update 112 to the full Board for approval at the April Board Meeting. The meeting was adjourned at 5:11. Our next meeting will be April 24th at 4:00 p.m.
Thank you, Mrs. Davis. Any questions? We do have a policy item, consideration for approval of Localized Update 112. Mr. Augenberg? Some light reading there.
It's policy update time again, and tonight, we are discussing TASB's Policy Update 112. As with most of these updates, the majority of these policies that underwent changes were legal policies. Legal policies are the law, and the changes are typically just revisions to better match the changes in statutory language, or updates to reflect the revision from the various rules and regulations from the administrative or education code, or even the federal law rules and regulations. Being such, these policies are the updated laws and don't need to be approved by the Board. The full policy... The full policies, all 350-plus pages, are accessible on the board, on the Policy Committee Board Book from the March 27th meeting. And also, a five-page summary chart is in your packet today. That's included in tonight's board book for your review. And if you have any questions now or in the future about these, please let us know. Of the local ones that are presented for your approval tonight, most are relatively minor changes, or they include topics that we've discussed before at other meetings. And I direct your attention to the board book in the file Local Policy Comparison Packet. And this document gives you the red line markup for all the recommended policy changes that we'll be talking about today. So the first one, BJA is formatting and renumbering or relettering changes. CCG is simply deleted and renamed CCGA. CH, and I'll go a little bit of out of order here and include CV. These two add references to state and federal law. There are just a few clauses in there. CQ includes a new section stating that the district accepts electronic signatures as outlined by the Department of Information Resources. DCB clarifies employees who are to receive Chapter 21 contracts. DH includes language that specifically states that an employee violates policy by making a false statement or refusing to cooperate with the district investigation. DIA adds the word sex to the list of protected categories when referencing discrimination and harassment, and that's to match the federal law. FMA clarifies that district and campus publications are under district control. FNG, GF, and GKAP all include language referencing the appeal process for someone who is ejected or refused entry to district property. And finally, GKB clarifies that the district may reject advertising, and also adds new language regarding the acknowledgement of district sponsors and donors. These policy changes have been reviewed by the Policy Committee, and we recommend the additions, revisions, and deletions of these local policies as presented. Any questions?
Anybody have any questions? This is an approval item, requires a motion.
I'll make the motion to accept the changes.
Motion by Dr. Sanhi?
Second.
Seconded by Mrs. Davis. All in favor, signify by saying aye.
Aye.
The motion passes. Thank you very much. And with that, we're adjourned. Thank y'all for attending tonight.